Please.
Paul Winter, City Council.
Mike Warrington, City Council Member.
Radio Katie, City Council Member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Homer, City Council Member.
Phil Hamilton, City Council Member.
Tim Berry, City Council Member.
Bobby Cannon, Police Chief.
Rick Landis, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Julie Boyd, Interim Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Matt, Director of Finance.
Andrew Kovar, Infor JT Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director of Community Development.
Jolene Graham, Assistant City Administrator.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, this time Doug Hodgins of Christ Church is going to lead us in worship prayer. How you doing, sir?
Good. I don't think you want me to lead us in worship.
Brother, you don't know. We might.
Nobody will be here when I'm finished. All right, let's pray. Father, we come to you tonight with hearts of gratitude. We thank you, Lord, for the gift of today and for the opportunity to gather in this place to serve this community. Lord, we thank you for your presence that guides us and it reminds us that we are never alone. Lord, you are the source of everything good. You're the one who gives light to our path and strength to our steps. And we pause tonight, Lord, to acknowledge our dependence on you for understanding when decisions are difficult, for grace when we disagree, and for courage to do what is right. Lord, we lift up to you every person who serves this city, our mayor, council members, staff, first responders, educators, and all who labor quietly behind the scenes. Father, bless them with wisdom that is rooted in compassion and with endurance that comes from hope. God, help us to see beyond our interest and agenda. Teach us to listen well, to speak with kindness, and to seek the welfare of all who call Andover home. We pray for your peace to fill this room and your spirit to dwell in every heart tonight. And above all, may your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. We ask all of this in the matchless name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
If you would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. All right, at this time I will open the floor for, man, I'm having trouble tonight, public forum. If you would state your name and address and keep it short. Nobody?
Darren Spitzemberger, 216.
Step to the podium.
Please.
Please.
Yeah, my name is Darren Spitzemberger, 216 Sweet Gum Court, Andover, Kansas.
Renee Fraser, same address, 216 Sweet Gum Court. Do we say why we're here?
Yeah.
We're here for John, the greenskeeper, and his position with the Andover Municipal Golf Course and also to kind of protect the citizens here with the golf course.
Okay.
So, and there's others.
And we've got a petition here that we had everybody sign or in the process of signing still. So we're just trying to get conversation started with the city to kind of understand how this is executed on your end. As far as Oaks Manager, we understand that you've got a contract with them, but we will understand the hiring, firing process because what we're seeing is he seems to run off. This is the owner, seems to run off good help. So we're trying to see if we can, this side, we can do something about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you spoken to the golf management company?
No.
Well, we have John, the guy, the greenskeeper that is here, and he's done such a stellar job. No, we didn't find like it was our place to contact the management company to tell them how to run his business because I'm pretty sure he's on contract with the city and he can hire and fire as he chooses.
But we've also known the past employees and, and kind of what their position with, with the golf course and how well they did with the golf course and things that happened that are basically the same thing that's happening to John. You know, they, they bring up that they, it's time for a raise or they were promised insurance and, or this or that. And as soon as that happens, they get terminated.
Have you brought this to anyone on the city staff?
No, that's why we're here.
Yeah, we're just starting the ball here to see what we can do if we have any standing at all.
You know, the citizens pretty much own the golf course. And I know that the, you know, I guess the funds don't stay at the golf course. So, you know, it'd be nice to know that, you know, something so beautiful now that, I mean, the fruits of his labor and the people that he has that were working with him to make the course amazing. We live on the course. We are enjoying everything that has occurred and is happening there. And to see all that kind of go away, and that's kind of what happens, would be sad. I think that, you know, you know, he deserves not only to stay there, but apparently he knows every aspect of the business. He does payroll. He knows how to run the front desk. He knows how to do every single thing on that property. And, you know, I don't know why we need a management company to begin with, but to see the funds, the revenue leave Andover and go to Lawrence or wherever it's going, it's, it's kind of a shame, you know, that it's outsourced, you know, it's outsourced. So.
So, so as a city council, we're, we're not able to make any decisions from the bench, but we're, but we can listen and, and, and go from there. But we can't make any decisions from this bench, but that's what the public forum's for to, so you can express your, your concerns. And then we have to, we just can't say, do anything from the bench itself, right?
Sure.
So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, appreciate you coming. I always say that to anyone that's willing to get up and speak on any cause that they, you know, feel that they need to. It, my understanding is to what the mayor's saying, we'll, we'll hear more from city staff and we'll understand the situation a little bit better. And then, you know, if there'll be some follow-up, I'm sure from city staff or you guys, I would say that that would be your next step would be to reach out to city staff and inquire with them as far as what you can do.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll do whatever we can. I mean, we want him to stay. We lost Brandon Cross, same thing. He got terminated. He was, he was running, you know, the club and he was up for a bonus apparently. And Dick, the, who owns Oaks Golf LLC, told him that he can have two guys for the same salary he was getting. And, and they didn't work out either, so that, that he brought down. So it, it's nice, longevity, having someone that's staying there that puts pride in, in their work, and this man does.
Yes, for sure.
Yep. I mean, we definitely can't vote on anything and that's not what we're doing, but we are listening to you. But the only things I can say is you need to talk to, you know, the Greens' ownership and also talk to staff.
Yeah.
And if there are some major employee, you know, concerns, then you need to let the city staff know.
Yeah, just tell us who to talk to.
Okay.
Because we'll, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to talk to anybody else? Because we'll let them talk.
They're welcome.
And you guys can always reach out through email to the individual city council members as well.
Anyone else?
So I've just got a quick question. When you say.
State, state your name, Roth.
Roth, sorry, Roth Christopherson. One of the questions I have is, I know, I don't know what it takes to have somebody come in here and set up a contract like this for them to run Andover's golf course. But when there's so many issues going on over the last six years there and people come up here and say, hey, there is an issue, but you guys, and I'm, I'm not trying to cross the line here, but you guys stand up here and go, sorry, there's nothing we can do. Talk to city council. Who do we talk to? Because you guys are the ones that probably purchased this contract and it's not being fulfilled there at all. And so we're just, I just, I hate to see the city of Andover lose this golf course because nobody cares. And there's a bunch of people that care. I'm out there on the golf course now from six o'clock in the morning until 12:30, one o'clock in the afternoon, and all I hear are good things. But now they're getting ready to go bye-bye. So who, who do we talk to? Because from what I've, I've been there a short time and I've heard there's a bunch of money being spent that shouldn't be. And I would hope you guys would care. I mean, does, does anybody care? And to look into it or what?
City Administrator right here, Jenny McCoslin. Jolene, Assistant City Administrator, Public Works Director, you know, right there. So they're all here and listening to you.
Can I get a card before I step out?
Yeah, I would also suggest that you might look at the city council agendas because Dick comes in and presents per the contract on a quarterly basis and provides the financials, and those are all available online. So there is accounting per the contract and that requirement is met and they receive that every quarter of the year.
Okay, so if there is an issue and he just comes in and says everything's amazing and it's not, what do we do?
Well, first go ahead and know about it. So specifics would help. And then like Paul said, email.
Yeah, and I think this is an offline conversation, but I do think we have to talk about what the contract requires and what doesn't feel good to other individuals. We've got to adhere to a contract. When we enter into an agreement, there's expectations on both sides of it and we have to stick to that contract.
Okay, perfect. And I'm not trying to step on any toes. I just want to make sure something gets done. Because I, I mean, I own a business here and I love that golf course and it's about to fall apart. So.
I can assure you that nobody cares more about that golf course than the mayor of Andover.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I, I, I put a lot into keeping it, so. All right, anyone else?
My name is Charles McCumber. I live over in El Dorado. And I've been a member out there for eight years and the course looks the best I have ever seen it. And I enjoy that course immensely. I belong to El Dorado's course and I play more over here than I do over there. So I just wanted to show my support for John and all the work he's put in because it's the best it's looked ever since I've been out there.
Are you the Wednesday's group?
I am, Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday group. And a great bunch of people, great bunch of people golf out there. I've gotten to know a lot of folks over here. And if I was to move, I'd move to Andover, but I'm in El Dorado. So I just wanted to show my support for the golf course and for the superintendent, the Greens superintendent, which is John. And whoever can make some decisions or look at the contract and find out what we can do to help keep this course in the shape it's in, I'm in support of that. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Donnie Moore. And what I'd like to find out is I've owned a house over 15 years and on my bill for the sewer water and everything. And I've never had trash service in the 15 years I've had that house. But yet I'm still getting a charge for recycling. And I've been paying this for 15 years and it's never come off. I've talked to several people about it. And I just wonder, what do I have to do to, to get it off of there? I should have paid for something I don't have, never have had. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but that's not the point. The point of getting charged for nothing I don't have.
Do you know who you've spoken to recently?
Pardon me?
Do you know who you have spoken to recently at the city?
Oh, hell, I've called a lot, talked to a lot of the girls in here. I've talked to several people.
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing here.
Okay. Is that something that is normally on our, on bills that people?
Every month.
Rick, is that something?
Yep.
And so it doesn't come off no matter what? Okay.
That's, that's not much of an answer. How can you charge somebody and you don't have the service? That's not right.
Is that something that somebody from staff can talk about right now?
From who?
The city council approved in 2010 an ordinance mandating recycling for the city of Andover. It is mandatory pay, optional participate. So if you choose not to participate, you just don't want to put anything in the bin. You don't have to, but it is mandatory pay and that was approved in 2010. So it's been in place for 15 years as you've indicated. That is law in Andover today.
So basically what you're saying, I'll have to pay this forever.
Correct. As long as it's the law, yes, sir.
As long as what?
As long as it's the law, yes, sir.
So you pass a law that you had to pay this even though you don't have, you don't have no service out there for that?
You, you can get the service. You're.
I want the service. I got, I don't live over here. I live over at Fall River. But I bought that house. It used to be my focus. And I never had trash and I take it over to my house at Fall River and take care of it over there. I have no need for it over here.
So all the times you've called and no one has been able to explain that to you?
No, it's what I'm doing up here. They sent me up here to talk.
Thank you for coming in because someone from staff should have spoken to you about the, the law on its end and gave you a full explanation on it.
Well.
So that's kind of sad.
I didn't get one. I talked to several of the ladies down here. And that's, like I said, that's why I'm up here today, talk to you guys.
And Donnie, I don't think you said your address. Can you state your address?
Foranda.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We can't, we really can't change anything from the bench tonight, but that, but that's the, that's the.
I understand.
And I, and I, and so, so one thing to keep in mind, we're all citizens too and we have to pay for it as well, whether we use it or not.
I understand that, but right is right and wrong is wrong. And this, that's wrong. That's just like stealing. It really is, the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
Don't mind the, the water part of it, but that, you know, paying for something that I've never had it, it should never happen. It should be on that bill when I come down there and pay my water bill.
Okay. We thank you for start coming in, talking to us about it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Anna Warrington at 1320 South Colleen Terrace. And I am coming here with just, from our, our neighborhood of Lakeview Heights. We just thought it was important to give an update on the town hall meeting that we had about six months ago regarding the waterway and the pond maintenance and that sort of a thing. And so about, you know, earlier this year, we had requested a meeting with the city staff for our perspective, the purpose of the meeting was to understand, we have new, we have new leadership. The city has new leadership. And our perspective was to just kind of learn and understand pond maintenance and the partnership with the city and the neighborhoods. And so in the situation, the specific situation, just to remind everyone, was specifically with tornado damage and just that waterway that runs through our neighborhood. It's not technically a retention pond. It's a tributary for four mile creef. So it is stormwater drainage and whatnot. And so there was a grant that the city received that we had acquired for not just our neighborhood, but for the effort of helping other neighborhoods that were impacted by the direct hit of the tornado. And so our perspective for the meeting was to try to understand moving forward the opportunity to use what we considered free funds that were required by us to repair and restore and prepare this area for future developments. And, but also learning best practices for maintenance and because it's just not something that anybody in our neighborhood is really up on. And so, and we were hoping to maybe evenly with some resources that would help our HOA understand what we might need to do for budgeting, if we were going to have to raise our HOA dues and just things like that. And also just curious about how the city might, or what the city did have in place for protecting that investment that we put into that waterway from our HOA funds, money out of our pockets. And so those were mentioned in a prior comprehensive plan. And so we were just curious as to how to protect our investment, should we, you know, to move forward and how there was a, a partnership with there. And, and then also understanding the current theory of engineering and development of how, when, when things are built, the, it's designed to maintain and the outflow of water so it doesn't affect downstream. And so we also wanted to understand the city's perspective because there seemed to have been like some maybe, I don't know, there was some discord, a little bit of tension there as far as what maybe we were expecting that wasn't, you know, that just wasn't, that wasn't worth us expecting. And so we just wanted to kind of understand that and just have a, you know, just a meeting with that. And we were offered the town hall setting. Just a couple of things that we were wanting to understand was the responsibility of the city with the flood plain management ordinance that was adopted in 2018. And then how with that million dollars that we helped acquire for not just our neighborhood, but any other neighborhood that was impacted that does ultimately affect our neighborhood downstream, how that million dollars was used for the, which was fine, but then how that did offer a surplus and how it wasn't redirected or even considered for help for the neighborhoods that were impacted. And so not only with that, but then also another question was we pride ourselves in being the fastest growing city in Kansas. And how does our current comprehensive plan not even address something that was mentioned in the prior comprehensive plan with the LID type of drainage systems and research into that and implementing that in the future for development? Now that we're going to have the widening of Kellogg, we've got the development north of Kellogg and how that does impact if there's not any kind of protocol or any type of accountability for the neighbors upstream to maintain their property and, or their ponds and how it does come down through that stormwater, especially this, this year, it was pretty rainy. And so, and to learn at that meeting that there was still nothing in place for protocol or for accountability to make sure that these waterways are maintained. So with, with that being, you know, in the, with the meeting and the town hall meeting, we weren't able to address things that were specific to our neighborhood. And so moving forward, a few, you know, a few weeks later, we had an opportunity to work with the city with removing debris and we spent all of our money to do that. And then we are now in a situation where we removed more than what the city was willing to. We were told that what we removed, the city would find disposal for and it turned out to be more than what the city was prepared to, to remove. And so now we have, you know, a lot of extra dirt that we are trying to find a place for. But it would be great if instead of field dirt coming into town while we are preparing roadways and whatnot, that the city remember that we have plenty of field dirt in our neighborhood that's readily available. But mostly with the rain this year, we have had more, and it's more obvious because we did clear out quite a bit, more debris, more trash, more sediment coming through that is basically making all of our effort and all of our investment null and void. To the point where we get a lot of even, I don't even know what the stuff is. It's mossy stuff that fills up the grate for the drain. And grateful for the city for coming and maintaining that. But it's disheartening to see them shovel it from the grate and then walk over the bridge and dump it into what we just spent $20,000 removing. And so there's, I want, I don't expect, sadly, I don't expect much. What I would expect is that this stay on the forefront and the minds of this council as we have new people coming on, that this is a known problem for decades, that there was funds available that were not chosen to help the citizens and the residents that was reallocated somehow, spent some way, but at our, but not for the neighborhood north of us, not for our neighborhood, not for anything south, to try to, it was an opportunity that we were able to fix something that was kind of broken and prepare us for something in the future. And when we approached the city about it, quite frankly, the email in response was a little bit condescending, a lot of it condescending, and had a tone of spreading misinformation. When we came to town hall, it was obvious that the misinformation was not from us. We were well aware of what was going on. It felt as though the misinformation was coming from a city who knew about the situation and trying to control the narrative that was just not there. And so I, we want to make sure that moving forward, and we will keep coming back until there is something in place because this is money out of our neighbors' pockets, out of our residents, that we are having to spend with no insurance, no quality, nothing. And it affects our property. It affects our, it affects our property value. It affects our way of life. It affects our neighborhood. It affects the neighborhoods north of us. In theory, the engineering and the development, it doesn't work. They are not, if they don't have to maintain their water and their ponds, it's going to run down. If there's nothing in place to make that happen, it, the theory doesn't work. On paper, it looks great, but if there's nothing that requires people to maintain upstream, it will obviously come down. And I'd like for that to just stay on the forefront of this council. How we don't have this in the current comprehensive plan after ideas were offered by the engineering company in the prior comprehensive plan blows my mind since we have so much progress coming to this, so much money coming to this community, so much effort in trying to build this into a community and how we are only worried about what we look like and the parks and the pictures. I get it. Sewage or drainage, stormwater drainage, infrastructure, it's not sexy. Nobody wants to talk about it. That's not on the pictures on the website. It's not in the PowerPoints. Nobody wants to spend money on that. Nobody wants to spend time on that. It has to be done because it affects the residents and the people that live here who do care about what our neighborhoods look like and what our community looks like. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
My name is Kate Andrews, 641 South Allen Street. I'm just asking a question. Will there be time to speak on line item, line item nine later or is that for now?
Um, now.
Now, okay. I live, line item nine references apartments that are being built off Allen Street, Cloud, et cetera, in that area. I am the direct south property owner. My concerns with those apartments going up are that Andover will be over, like there'll be too many apartments. I understand we're the fastest growing city in Kansas, which is great. I'm all for it. I've had discussions with members on city council and we're in alignment, but we also think that there should be more lower income houses and the range is like 200,000-ish. And so my preference is, is if that's what wants to be built there, that's fine. But specifically in terms of the apartments. But specifically in terms of the apartments, if you go in that neighborhood, it's quiet, it's quaint, there's wildlife, my chickens run around, lots of things going on there. I see deer every day. So my, my issue is the noise and everything like that might take that away. Number two is more than likely this will go through and it's not my decision, that's fine. But ultimately, the, from everything I've seen through the packets that are on this agenda, page 64, et cetera, all of that, it just shows that the city wants to prioritize out of state, non taxpayers when it comes to this development, specifically when it comes to developing the area. And if you're going to develop the area and take away from the current taxpaying residents of Andover, I think they should at least finish the roads, make sure the drainage is right, put up fences. I know the tree lines stay in certain places, why can't it stay in all the way and just trim it up? I think another aspect we've had is since me being on that south line, they have a Reserve A on the packet. My biggest concern is my north side already receives a lot of drainage issues. My fence is washing out, my road's washing out, what are my assurances on that? And in these planning and zoning meeting that was done about a month ago, they mentioned the Holiday Inn drainage issues, which are already a huge problem. If you want to see videos, I have dozens. If they don't address the drainage issues correctly on this property, it's going to happen on my side of the street, which is then going to start flooding my house, especially if they don't do it right. And I understand M K E C claims that they have the best drainage, but I personally have no experience with them. Bottom line for me is I just hope that the city doesn't ignore taxpayers and residents who have lived in the neighborhood for over 40, 50 years, some of these people, Jim Kubis specifically, Keith Travol, they're not here, I'm speaking on behalf of them. My grandpa bought the house in 86, my dad in 16, and me about a month ago. So that's my concerns. Take care of us, no problem. Don't take care of us, problems.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Les, where does that on Reserve A, that's the detention pond for that new development, where does it outfall? I see Allen Street there, I see the south side of, I see the pipes coming in on page seven, concept utility plan, but I don't see where the outfall is. It's got to be some stream or going into the ditch, I don't know if there's a ditch on Allen or not, but there's, so where is it actually outfalling? Yeah, page seven. Because it, I mean, it does show a house there on the south side of Reserve A, but hopefully it's not going that way.
Page 64, Mike, shows the outfall, I think, maybe what you're referencing.
Yeah, it has a little more detail on it.
Can't we wait to go through this when we go through?
Certainly.
Can we get out of public forum?
Certainly. And representatives are here, both the applicant and their engineer, but drainage is addressed. There are two outfalls from that drainage reserve.
Okay, all right. So y'all can talk about that later, please.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so we'll do it after public forum.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak from the public? All right. Last chance. Public forum is now closed. It's acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Award seven one, Sergeant Garland, lifesaving award, and Buck is going to talk to us about
Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us to do this tonight. There's a few awards that we give out that we try to do it in front of the council. Lifesaving is one of those that because we know the significance, what it does for our community and those that do this. So I'm going to read a little bit formal and just, I won't take too long on this one, but explaining what the lifesaving award is, is to be confirmed upon any member of the department whose actions are directly responsible for saving or substantiating a human life. This award may be made when evidence suggests action by the member prolonged a person's life to the extent the person was released to medical authorities, even if the person later passed. This award will be presented in form of a ribbon bar and a certificate. So on April the 26th, 2025, Sergeant Robert Garland responded to a report of an individual not breathing. Butler County EMS Medical Services arrived at the same time as Sergeant Garland and informed him that the patient was experiencing agonal.
Agonal.
There you go. Agonal breathing. Sergeant Garland recognized this to be a sign of an opioid overdose and offered medics his naloxone. The medic did not know how to administer this particular naloxone. Now, they do it a different way and that's why they didn't really understand what we carry and stuff. So it was great on his part and that's what our department carries. So Sergeant Garland quickly taught the medic how to use the product. And after the naloxone was administered, the patient regained consciousness and began breathing normally. Sergeant Garland's quick actions and quick thinking directives contributed greatly to prevent the patient's loss of life and ensure the patient's quality of life. This goes to the testament to Sergeant Garland, taking things above and beyond, as you'll know him, his personality is he wants to be the best at what he's doing. And one of those is the training that he receives when it comes to naloxone, saving people's lives, responding, he doesn't hesitate. He wants to be there to try to help our citizens in many different fashions. So I'm very proud of him for this as well because it's the efforts that he took to do this, to help an EMS person that wasn't quite sure, but he recognized on a medical side of it, hey, I know what's going on with this person. So it just goes to how much he takes this job serious and wants to find other ways, you know, to protect and serve our citizens as a whole. So it's a blessing tonight to have his family here. As you can see, the young ones are here to support Dad as well because they know as well how important this is for tonight. So tonight I want to congratulate, and I want you to help me congratulate Sergeant Garland on this lifesaving award.
No, you don't have to. You're welcome to.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, eight through eight five.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve consent agenda items eight point one through eight point five as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Nine one, preliminary P U D, the thoroughbred. And I got to read, I'm going to read this checklist. And the gentleman, oh, okay. Rezoning case number Z-P U D twenty-five dash zero 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 nine. This is an application to establish the thoroughbred planned unit development plan generally located at five one five West Highway fifty-four, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'd like to ask council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest.
No.
I will now ask council if any of them have, I will now ask council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this agenda item which they would like to share.
No.
City clerk is not here. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on the case?
Yes.
Do they constitute statutory required 20% necessitating a three force vote of the council to approve this case?
Yes.
Having determined that a valid protest petition has been submitted to the clerk, I would remind the city, the council, that six affirmation votes are necessary to approve this case. I now ask council members if they have all received a copy of the draft minutes of the planning commission for September sixteenth, 2025, which summarizes the hearing on the case.
Yes.
I now call on the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on the case.
Mayor and council, this is a preliminary planned unit development application for the almost nineteen acre parcel that is across fifty-four from the Buffalo Bridge Apartments that are under construction. Currently, this is a basically vacant lot that these developers would like to transform into the thoroughbred planned unit development, which would begin in its first phase with the aforementioned apartments potentially. That's not really something set in stone at this stage, but that is their current plan. This would be zoned with the MXR, multiple family mixed residential zoning in the parcel one that you can see, and the B five highway corridor, mixed use business zoning in parcels two and three. There's also a parcel four to the north, it's that skinny strip up by Kellogg, that is anticipated to become part of the KDOT right of way as the KDOT expansion project moves over into this area, and we expect it to include a frontage road, which would be able to serve those smaller properties to the north that are anticipated to contain businesses. Per the city's access agreement with KDOT, none of those can directly access the frontage road with a driveway. Only public streets can connect to the frontage road, so we anticipate some public street connection for those businesses as well. The developer wishes to work with the city to get what is currently Clyde Street over to the west connected through the middle that you can see there to Cloud Street to the east where it currently terminates. We, per the fire marshal, we're still kind of up in the air on what the name will be in this section, Clyde or Cloud, so that's not necessarily something we're setting in stone with this planned unit development. The comprehensive plan is really very much in support of this project. The area up near the highway, actually I have my map for you. There we go. The area up near the highway, closer to it is our city corridor place type, which encourages denser uses with businesses and potentially some denser residential uses. And then further to the south, we move into our mixed residential neighborhood place type, which encompasses a lot of the surrounding existing residential, which is mixed residential, so mostly residential, some light business uses, and apartments are a prime use for this area, Buffalo Bridge right across the street. The subdivision committee recommended approval of this at the September ninth meeting, and they revised their P U D at that time a little bit. Planning commission recommended their approval at their September sixteenth meeting of this revised P U D. I will say, I'm not a drainage expert, but I can, I can speak to that a little bit. As a part of the plating and P U D process, we do, part of this drainage study, maintain that the drainage characteristics of the property are not meaningfully changed after something like this goes into effect. So that's the idea, is that the drainage stays the same, even though the actual physical makeup of the property would obviously change.
Okay. Are there any questions to the zoning administrator from council members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I got one. Julie, in regards to the minutes previously when the zoning, they, they commented about Holiday Inn and that causing drainage issues to the south. Was there drainage done like this would be on the Holiday Inn project? And is there any evidence that there's different issues of the flow from that property causing damage to the south?
I'm not aware of a drainage study that we've done since that would talk about that. I was not with the city at the time that that went in, so I can't speak to what that installation process looked like. But, you know, it is likely that drainage characteristics have changed over time. It's probably something that has happened as the, you know, erosion has occurred in the area that's been there for years. This property that we're dealing with here does not have anything to do with that, it's just across the street, but it is in a similar area.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Julie, I know you said the plan and intent right now is for apartment units. Can you give a couple of other examples of, under this coding, what could also fall under potential uses if we were to do that?
Yeah, there's actually a big, long list in the P U D document of everything that is allowed to be done. We are looking at apartments are one of the potential uses in the south area. Could also, if the developer decided, could be something less intense, so duplexes, for example, could also go there.
Essentially any multi-family.
It doesn't, it's not even required to be multi-family necessarily, but that, yeah, that kind of intensity of use.
I, I do have, I guess, a statement more than anything. I, I see a pattern, and I don't know if it's just coincidence or ironic, but you know, we had the, the wonderful lady over, it was Meadow Haven Street having drainage issues. We've had, you know, folks over in Crescent Lakes having drainage issues. This seems to be a huge or a bigger issue. And so, you know, I've, I've spoken, you know, I have some friends that live over kind of in that area, and, you know, they've been there for forty years and they've said the exact same thing, that when Holiday Inn came in, that whole area just kind of, you know, I don't want to use the word floods, but that whole area is very damp. So I, I guess I'm just concerned that, I don't know if we're not putting enough time or effort or we're so excited to get development that we're not truly looking at the drainage as well, or we're not expecting it as, as much as we do. I do know, you know, this last year, we've had unseasably wet, rainy items, but I mean, if we're having, having issues, you know, at, you know, housing development, then we're having issues over at Crescent Lakes, we're having issues here. It seems like we need, maybe we need to spend a little bit more time with some drainage and, and, you know, put some more deeper investigation in it. I don't know the process, I'm not a drainage engineer, it just seems, you know, all these developments keep coming in and we're having drainage issues in other, other parts of our city.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we definitely can add additional drainage requirements. We can look at other cities that have issues like this and, and we, we really don't want to talk about this, do we? We, we want this to be nice and pretty and, and designed right, but, and I'm sure it is, but it's not, it's not happening. So why are we, why do we keep talking about it? Because it keeps coming up. So this may be something that needs to be looked at and see what other requirements, you know, that needs to be done. You design for a twenty-five year, you design for a hundred year floods, and I'm sure y'all do that. And, but, you know, maybe we need to have another requirement, but what that, what that is, I'm not sure. But it's something that staff probably could look at and to make sure that when we have these developments and bigger developments that come in that are going to be outfalling into undeveloped property and near people's homes or into ditches, that it's actually being detained correctly. And to make sure that, especially when they're building it, that sediment is not coming off of the, the property, because I can tell you that we've had different color, you can, you know that, and when you see different color water coming through in large drains, it's coming off of a development. And that happens quite a bit, and we see that in our neighborhood. So something to think about, staff, and I'm sure there's something that you probably have in mind, and let's just think how we can do this in the future.
To be clear, though, the last two that have come in is because neighbors altered the, the grate of their yards after the city approved, the developer, they had to have a drop from the house to the end of the property. So the last two were not because of the city, they were because neighbors altering their yards to where the, the property would not drain correctly. So Mr. Frederick, he could tell you that he talked to his neighbor a dozen times and he kept moving more dirt in, more dirt in, so, and the other lady was. a dozen times and he kept moving more dirt in, more dirt in. So, and the other lady was, uh, was the same situation. It was the neighbor causing the, the problem. So the city does what they were supposed to do with the developer, and that's, that's kind of out of our hands at that point. It's more of a legal issue as JT took the time to explain to us. Anyone else?
Yeah, that's really the basic difference between, uh, a lot versus a subdivision. The subdivision is building it to tell you this is what they're expecting, how much water is coming in, and this is what we're going to outfall only knowing what's going to be built there. You got some buildings on here, but then you say you could have this or that, so you're building a detention pond for, for what? You know, uh, for this, the buildings that you're putting on there that you might change. Of course, and if you do change that, now you gotta change your detention and your calculations if you're putting some, something bigger or more, um, filling up more of the lot. Uh, it looks like you're sorry, pretty full now, but, uh, but there's things like that that do change when you're starting to change the design of what's going there. So that needs to be kept in mind from staff who's reviewing this. Um, so we don't have these, um, problems for a whole development uh, versus a lot versus lot, uh, discrepancies.
Anyone else?
I think Lust was gonna say something.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I think it's important to remember that there is drainage on the property before the development. And it's the developer's responsibility to detain those outfall points to a rate of run out runoff that is at or below pre-development conditions. And you, you have an intense report already on this proposed project that goes into great detail about how they will achieve that. I can assure you, the same effort was put in for the development before the Holiday Inn. I'm probably the only guy in the room who remembers the property before the Holiday Inn. There were drainage problems then. The developer at that time installed detention facilities to reduce the rate of runoff to pre-development conditions.
A fine example of that is what, one we're going to be dealing with in the near future at twenty-first and Andover Road. It's, it's got water issues already. So when the developers go to do that, they're going to go above and beyond what the expectations are to, to your point, to keep the water where it's supposed to be. Right?
That's a, a good example. Um, same as this right here. I mean, it's, it's, there's already somewhat of an issue that we hear. And I'm assuming that y'all are staff and then eventually, um, building, um, M A B D C, whatever, uh, is reviewing that to make sure that all that is being um, calculated right. And and it, it could be even, because this, I, I'm assuming this is outfalling into ditches, right? Like this development is outfalling into ditches? Along Allen?
There is one segment that outfalls into the ditch, but the majority outfalls into a field as it does today at the southwest corner of the property.
I think we can all remember that twenty-first Street and Andover Road was a lake more than it was dry for years before the developer put in the retention pond. So I think that's one point to, you can see that it, it has improved the property on the corner of twenty-first and Street and Andover Road.
Yeah, it may, it definitely should improve it.
It did.
I mean, I'm saying it should. So it's, no one's arguing here, but what we're trying to just, what I'm trying to say is let's protect the people downstream. They, they're the same citizens as the ones going in here. And because we don't want to hear this, right? We don't want to hear it. So let's do, let's do a better job. And let's not, you know, discount the people who live there. You know, they know what's, they, they know what's there.
Nobody does that, Mr. Warrington.
But like I said, no one's arguing, no one's trying to point any fingers, but let's just do a better job. And we, we, we always talk about how great we are, how fast we're growing. Let's not, let's not just throw it in. Let's make sure that we're doing it right.
Anyone else?
I think that's kind of what I, you know, what I'm saying as well. I'm not, I'm not a drainage engineer. I just want to make sure that these people, you know, our citizens are, you know, they see all this development come in that they're taken care of. And can we double check? Can we look? Can we make sure? You know, can, can we, you know, I think this is an MKEC prob, I'm not sure who's doing the engineering on it, but, you know, ma- make sure they, they take a look, you know, second and third eyes on it, make sure that we're, we're not, you know, five years from now, we're like, oops, we've, we didn't do this right, you know? So that, that's kind of what I'm saying. I just want to make sure that we can double check and make sure that it's, that it's taken care of correctly.
Okay. Anyone else? Have any written communications been, uh, city clerk, has any written communication been received?
No, sir.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Josh Robinson. I serve as the Director of Development, in-house counselor for Winterwood Development. Um, as everyone knows, we're here tonight, uh, regarding the project known as the thoroughbred. I, I don't have a, a, a new information necessarily, but did want to introduce myself and talk about the project just a little bit and the process that we've gone through to get here. Um, over the past several months, our team, together with our engineer MKC, who is here this evening, has worked closely with city staff and other city departments. Uh, we carefully reviewed feedback, addressed technical comments and coordinated to ensure that we comply with all requirements and additional comments that each department has, had given. Um, from the beginning, we were intentional about the design of the thoroughbred. Uh, we wanted it to line with the comprehensive plan of Andover. Uh, we studied that carefully. We studied the goals, the, the design goals, the connectivity goals, and just the community investment goals of the comprehensive plan. Um, we do believe this project advances the city's vision by bringing well-planned development uh, to a location identified in the comprehensive plan. We are proud to share that through these efforts that, that we put in over the last couple of months, along with this, uh, help of a, a, our engineers, that we have, as mentioned, got full staff support and unanimous planning commission, uh, vote. Um, our engineer is here tonight. You don't want me talking about stormwater necessarily. So he can get into all those details and he is prepared to do that. Yeah, in closing, it's, it's been thoroughly vetted, carefully planned and designed with the coordination of the city and all the city's departments. It reflects the intent of Andover's comprehensive plan. With that, um, Winterwood respectfully request you approve to move this project forward. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration. And in adi- in addition to any other questions, again, I won't be the best for the stormwater, but any other questions, I'm, I'm here to, to, to answer as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Are there any questions to the applicant from the city council members or city staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A- as far as easement goes, Julie, so that little strip, do we know from Kansas, uh, KDOT, if that's all they're gonna need or are we gonna plan this? And then, you know, state of Kansas is gonna say, oh, we need another twenty feet. Can, is that, is this good?
KDOT has determined what the area of the right of way is going to be. I, I guess they could change their mind at some point, but that would be pretty unusual for an agency like that.
I just want to make sure we have enough, that we're not having to come back and do any kind of other.
I could. Right away plans are available from KDOT. And I know that the, the engineer for KDOT and the engineers from MKC are in communications about the needs for the phase one project.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thanks, sir. Um, we would like to welcome everyone, anyone, everyone interested in this agenda. Uh, item to come to the podium and give your name and address, please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes and the video of the public hearing has been made available, so please limit your comments to information not previously, that previously shared at the public hearing held on September sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Does anyone from the public, public have any new information? No?
Uh, Kate Andrews, six four one South Allen Street. Um, biggest thing is I just don't think, uh, I don't want the taxpayers to do it left behind with the development, um, on some of the plans. It shows a new ditch being brought just a partridge, which is not even the full length of the property. I think my personal opinion, you're gonna approve of it, that's fine. Finish the neighborhood, finish Allen Street, drain it off somewhere else. Um, there's issues on the west side, or excuse me, the east side of Allen, on the west side. They say it drains to the southwest. Uh, my fence line would show otherwise. My fence line's sinking and it runs under the fence, um, under my culvert and I'm down the ditch. So just address it right. Sorry.
And I'm sorry, sir. You're at six forty-one South Allen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant have any further response to the public comments?
Good evening, Jason Gish, MKC Engineering, four eleven North Webb Road. Um, I think has been stated and supplied in the drainage report, we would comply with all the necessary regulations. As Les mentioned, uh, the rule is generally the, that we can't release any more water at a rate greater than what it was existing. And so that's what, um, we've depicted for all the storms, two-year through a hundred-year in the drainage report. And, uh, uh, so from a design standpoint, um, we'll take the responsibility of that to make sure it's right. If there's, if, if you wanted to look more closely, I think it's page sixty, sixty-two, it shows you the watersheds on the site. There's three watersheds. Um, generally speaking, the, the eastern north-south half makes its way down Adam Street and the other half makes its way to the southwest corner. So a few pages later, it, it gives you a general schematic picture of kind of what those outfalls are and the sizes that are planned. So if you have any more detailed questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know you, you guys do a great job, you know, so, but you, you're gonna put the right size outfall there, but is anything downstream, uh, it's not your property, but what if it's not sufficient? Uh, wha- wha- what if it, the ditch that you're gonna go into is gets smaller? And that's also why things are spreading out all over the place and running under people's fences and stuff. Uh, and that's the example that I, the gentleman here, uh, that I was saying, we need to listen to people like that, you know, who, who live there too, uh, and that actually will make your design better. You know, not yet, partially, it may, sounds, you know, complaining, but he's actually giving good information. Um, and let's just take that and look at it and not just let the water come out at the edge of the property, but make sure that we're doing the right responsible thing, that it's actually gonna drain to where it's, where it has to go and not into, under people's fences and homes and if the road ditch is not big enough or whatever. Um, it's not that far from the, uh, uh, major outfall of, of a creek, but it still probably has to go uh, more than half a mile, three quarters of mile before it gets into something. Um, maybe even a mile. I'm just looking at the firm app. And, but let's just make sure it's going in the right way and everything downstream is sufficient. Uh, maybe your pipe is, uh, I don't remember what it, what size it is, the outfall pipe, but, um, let's just throw this out as an example. Uh, let's say your outfall pipe is a twenty-four and everything downstream is twelve. Obviously, that's a problem. So, um, and we're not, and we have nothing that says that you have to do or engineer to everything downstream, but, uh, at some point, we have to have responsible engineering that at least looks at it and says to the city, hey, there's gonna be a problem here, you know? Is this something that you guys can assist with or, or something? And I don't think that's the, completely the, the responsible, responsibility to the developer, but maybe some. If you're putting something in somewhere that already has issues downstream and you're like, oh, you know, this is what our property outfalls, but what can it handle downstream? You understand where I'm going?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay. So that just, you know, I, I know your, your engineering probably looks at your property, but I, I'm asking, um, when you, when you're at that, this point of having drainage approved, that staff looks at it and you guys have already looked at it, uh, and try to come up with a responsible thing. Because we have citizens that live downstream too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And, and Mike and, and Jason, just to speak a little bit of that, you, you brought up twenty-first and Andover Road, which is the area I live in. You know, I, I reached out to Jason. I, I didn't ask for, you know, staff's permission or anything. Then I copied Rick on an email and, and Jason did reply back. So he's always been open about it. Um, if there was any questions that came up during construction, that kind of thing. Um, and like you said, Mayor, that, that development up there, that area that you guys engineered is working out well. It, it is no longer a, a duck, um, duck truck stop or anything like there, i- if you want to call it that. Um, and there is, there is a wet retention pond, possibly pond lake. Um, so I just want to say, Rick and, and Jason were, were easy to communicate with when it came to what the concerns were a- and the outgoing, um, flow of the water up there as well. So I just appreciate that and wanna, wanna say that you're, you're well-versed in engineering of, of water and that kind of thing. So thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that. We, we, we will try to do our best to meet the, I mean, there's, this is the concern on every single project. Every, everything downstream, um, especially if it's not developed. It, uh, definitely, you know, there's less, it used to sheet flow, so there's always those challenges. So this would be very similar.
All right. Anyone else? Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you have received an outline of the choices provided under state statutes for Council Action KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven C. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a findings of fact and recommendation of the planning commission to approve case Z P U D two five dash zero 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 nine, establishing the thoroughbred preliminary PUD plan with the underlying MXR, multiple family, mixed residential and B five highway corridor, mixed use business zoning districts.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Mayor, if I may, did you want to take a roll call vote for that?
Yes. Council member Barry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council member Hamilton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council president, um, Henry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, Mayor Price, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, council member O'Kates, how do you vote? Council member Warrington, how do you vote?
Uh, no vote.
Council member Wimmer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion moves, uh, six to six to one.
Persons agree, um, persons agreed by the final decision of the council have thirty days on the matter from today's action, which into appeal to district court. All right, onward and upward, ten one fire engine financing bid award and Matt will speak to us about this.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we do have the next three items, all in regards to financing a fire engine that was approved in January. And before I start on that, I do want to say that I, I put a lot of consideration into things and Mr. Mayor, this morning I put on these pink socks because I know they're your favorite.
Thank you.
They're the only ones you've ever commented on. I have, I want to brag, I have an extensive sock collection. The only ones you've ever made a comment about, so I can only assume they're your favorite. Back to it. In January, on January fourteenth of this year, you all were heard from Chief Russell about the need for a new fire engine. And on that night you approved the purchase and we told you then that we had consulted with our financial advisors and bond counsel and we had determined that the best option would be to do a lease purchase. With the delivery of that fire truck coming up shortly in the next few weeks, we went ahead and issued the RFP in September, uh, for which we received five bids for a ten-year lease purchase on this fire truck. The winning bid was Clayton Holdings LLC, a subsidiary of Commerce Bank at three point eight five percent. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Matt, on the, uh, let me make sure I'm on the right, the bid award, the bid tabs. Why are they doubled? Like, why is there two thing, two lenders for Clayton Holdings to?
Most of them, most of them submitted a taxable and a non-taxable option. That's why.
And we're going with the non-taxable.
Going with the non-taxable, correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to award the lease purchase financing for a new fire engine in the amount of one million eighteen thousand dollars to Clayton Holdings LLC.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think you referred to, but what's that monthly payment then end up being, Matt?
The monthly payment is, I believe, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, annual payment, sorry, not monthly.
Okay.
And we are financing the amount of the fire truck that was approved, which is just shy of one million, one hundred and forty-three thousand and less a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that the, the city budgeted to pay toward it this year. So that's what got us to the financing amount of one million eighteen thousand.
Okay.
Any, anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Fire engine financing and Matt ordinance and Matt will again talk to us about this.
This is the ordinance prepared by your bond counsel. It's gives us the authority to use this financing mechanism.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt the ordinance authorizing the purchase of a fire truck and providing for the execution of a lease purchase agreement between the city of Andover and Clayton Holding LLC.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, ten three fire engine financing lease slash purchase and escrow agreement. And Matt again will talk to us.
Essentially asking permission to sign the papers for the thing we already said we were going to buy. Uh, however, there is one, uh, point here that we are, there are two agreements because we're closing on the lease purchase prior to delivery of the trucks. So the money will go into an escrow account until the truck is delivered. Once we've accepted the fire engine, then we will have them take the money from the escrow account to the.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And will that's, that same amount that we've budgeted this year, will that just be budgeted every year then?
Yes.
Okay.
For the next ten.
And what, maybe this is a chief question, what do we think the longevity then of that truck is? Or can you tell us the engine that it's replacing, when did we acquire that one?
It's in nineteen ninety-eight, but I hope we don't keep this one that long. So NFPA standard is twenty year life.
So we're looking at after it's paid off, having it another ten years?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the equipment lease purchase agreement between Clayton Holdings LLC and the city of Andover for the financing of a new fire engine in the escrow agreement between Clayton Holdings LLC, the city of Andover and UMB Bank.
Second.
Any, any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, eleven one KDOT innovative technology grant agreement. And Rick is going to talk to us about this.
Well, this is a good timing since it's following the purchase of a fire truck. Um, so the, uh, we applied for a grant for innovator technology. Um, and basically the gist of the grant is to upgrade some of our signals with what they call RSU units and what they will do. The bigger thing right now that it'll do is allow us and prepare us for, uh, traffic, uh, interruption. So when a fire truck or is approaching a signal, it will sense it, it'll read it off GPS location, change the signal to green and expedite the response vehicle through the signal, but also one of the bigger things it does too is it will help provide more safety for those responders as they're trying to cross. As we know, fifty-four is going to be busy coming up and it's going to get busier. This will help with that, getting those trucks across other signals, but also fifty-four. It does not go up all the way up north um, with this grant. They really won't let you do all of your signals. This is innovative technology or implementing it, not, you know? So, um, but a large cost of that is what goes in the vehicles and we have that covered in this and, um, getting it, getting the system set up. And then once we want, if we want to go on later, we can. It worked really well because we actually, two of the signals are in design right now. The one at Douglas is in design and the one at Founder's Way Parkway is in design. And I am waiting on an agreement, engineering agreement from the PC, or not PC, but, uh, trans systems that is doing the design work on it. And we can time that out to where we can make room in those boxes for these devices planned for, so it'll be easy to implement after the fact. So really excited about this grant. Um, it's covering the vast majority of the cost. The fire department had previously budgeted, uh, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in their five-year CIP. Um, we're going to ask them to participate in thirty thousand and our street improvement fund will pick up the seventy-five thousand. That's the balance of the city's at share cost with, uh, the KDOT, uh, grant covering three hundred and twenty thousand of the grant project, uh, of the total four hundred and twenty-five project costs, expected project costs. If anyone has any questions, I would, uh, be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't have a question. I just have to say congratulations. I mean, this is, this is amazing. I mean, that's three hundred and one, three, sorry, seventy-five, is that? Uh, that we as the city do not have to cover for this. This is amazing technology. Um, other cities have this. It is a major safety issue for our first responders and I am just thrilled that we were, were able to, you know, do some of these grants and Rick and your staff, and I'm sure Chief Russell had some, some part of some of that, but you know, just having your team apply for these grants and get that grant. I mean, this is, this is fantastic. It's amazing. So thank you for, for having this and doing this grant.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And, and Rick's, so does it go in the police cars as well?
Not this time. Um, that's, that's a lot of police cars. It's a lot of units. At, at this point, we'll, we'll start with the fire vehicles and we'll work our way out. Some cities put these in their snowplows, uh, as you can, it's hard to believe, but the middle of the night when they're plowing and it's snowing, it's a lot easier for them to roll through those lights. When they stop, it causes some issues and stuff. So there's options out there later on. The system set are, set up to eventually talk with smart cars and all these other things that are coming down the road. And, uh, I mentioned in my memo, one of the things that's nice about this is we're looking at the exact same system as what Wichita has deployed and there'll be some interoperability in between some neighboring communities that could potentially get worked out. There's some details that have to happen, but, um, we got to get to the point where we get our system working, then we can start talking to them.
And I did see in your memo that it is shared, um, or it'll help with the shared services room. Does it help with the ambulances?
It could potentially be put in those. We do not own ambulances, so.
I didn't know Butler already had it though, or?
Not to my knowledge, they don't have it, but once we get it up and running, we could work out some MOUs or something like that and get, uh, they would have to cover the cost of putting it and maintaining them in their own vehicles, obviously. We had to work out some agreements because there's horror stories out there where somebody sells an ambulance and it comes a plumbing vehicles deal and he's driving through town and all lights start changing and stuff. So you, you know, there's some things that have to be worked out. You can't just let them go and, and stuff. So there's, there's things out there. We, we've heard it all. So we're, we're, uh, we'll have to work through those, but yes.
And what intersections again will be covered on this piece?
At this time, it'll be, uh, Douglas, the fifty-four intersection, um, Cloud and, um, Harry, but I am going to talk to KDOT. I think we can maybe get them to let us, if it's the monies, if we can get it within the money, and I think we can, go ahead and add Yorktown in on there. The fire chief and I talked about that and he really expressed the desire to have that there. If not, we'll figure a way to get it in, but it, the plan is to add it there and then go north eventually and add those in. After we've proven it out, we're, we're happy with everything.
Don't tell me that Ronnie's getting one.
I was, I was thinking it, Mike. Mr. Mayor.
I was thinking it, man.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the grant award from Kansas Department of Transportation for an innovative technology project and authorize the mayor to sign a grant acceptance agreement.
Second.
Go Jody. Uh, uh, any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Twelve one, thank you for your work. Twenty, twelve one, twenty twenty-six employee pay plan and, uh, Chastity is going to speak to us about this.
Good evening. Um, I guess I could take a, a page out of Matt's book and say, you guys have kind of already approved this when you approved the budget, but we will get into the weeds a little bit here. Um, as you remember, we did implement a new, uh, pay scale, uh, that included new job grades that was developed, um, by the Arnold Group. Um, this was done after, um, a comprehensive pay study, um, in twenty twenty-four, uh, to make sure that we were trying to be more competitive with the other communities in our region. In April, we met with Arnold Group to review this, uh, salary structure and prepare for this twenty twenty-six budget. Um, they did make some mi- some minor adjustments to the existing structure. Um, basically they had rounded to the nearest nickel, uh, on a lot of the minimums and the maximums. And instead, um, we indicated that we would prefer that we look at actuals, um, and, and go to the penny on that type of stuff. So we, um, made those adjustments so that way any future adjustments to that pay scale will be reflected more accurately. With this, in order to remain competitive, um, there is that annual maintenance on that pay scale, which, uh, the recommended would be to look at the previous three years cost of living adjustments and, um, get the average and then use that average for the next year's, um, COLA adjustment. Since we took all of our employees up to, um, market at the beginning of this year in twenty twenty-five, uh, we felt it would be best to just look at this previous year's, um, CPI for the COLA adjustment and we are recommending that the COLA for twenty twenty-six be two point five percent. Now this pay structure also includes, um, longevity to account for, uh, tenure of our employees. So they move through steps within their current pay ranges. Those steps can be anywhere from one percent to three percent. Uh, so with that requested, uh, COLA employees, depending on where they're at within their current pay grade, could receive up to a five point five percent increase. Um, we have decided that there would not be any, uh, merit bonuses applied this year. Um, however, employees must get a solid rating on their performance evaluations, which supervisors are, um, doing right now, uh, in order to receive that full, uh, increase. The total estimated costs to implement the recommended COLA and those tenure and step movements, um, as well as some potential, uh, grade adjustments. So people that have the potential to be promoted, uh, to a different grade. Um, from this current year to next year would be just under four hundred and fifty thousand, um, which includes approximately twenty-one thousand for overtime. Uh, a few other things I want to point out, this pay plan, the average increase for our current employees annually is three thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. The range is from about thirteen hundred dollars to sixty-five hundred dollars. Um, eighteen of the employees will receive, um, more than the five point five percent increase at some point during twenty twenty-six. And this is due to the potential of the promotion to those higher pay grades. So we did go ahead and, and take that into consideration. And you will note that on the columns, we have the January one rates and then those that do have the potential for increases, um, they have their new positions in there as well as their potential, um, twenty twenty-six rates, if they do get those promotions. Uh, the pay plan also includes the bonus for full-time firefighters who hold A E M T and paramedic certifications. Um, if you have any questions, um, about the pay plan itself, um, you can let me know. Also, I would like to remind you that individual employees' performance and pay should not be uh, brought up at the bench. I'm happy to meet with you, uh, in an executive session if we need to do that regarding, um, non-elected personnel.
Thank you. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for that explanation, Chas. Um, I move to approve the twenty twenty-six pay plan as presented to be effective on the first paycheck received in January of twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Jesse. Thirteen one executive session, not elected, non-elected personnel, KSA seven five dash four three one nine B one.
Mr. Mayor, I moved to recess into executive session to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. The meeting will include the governing body and city attorney and the open meeting will resume in the council chambers at nine fifteen PM.
Second.
Is that Mike?
Yes.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Motion carries six zero.
Yes, sir.
I move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA seven five dash four three one nine B one. The meeting will include the governing body, city administrator and the city attorney. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers at eight, nine forty-five.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Can I get a mo-
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to come out of executive session.
Anyone?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve city administrators' contract as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
How many is that?
Two.
Yeah, still roll call.
Councilmember Wimmer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Warrington, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember O'Katie's, how do you vote?
Nay.
Council President Henry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Barry, how do you vote?
Nay.
Three to two. Motion fails three, two. Oh, two four.
Pardon me?
Motion fails two four.
Andrew, because this isn't dealing with the city ordinance, does the mayor, is the mayor allowed to vote? Since this- Okay.
I will yes, just for the record. Alright.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Helmer.
I move to recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The meeting will include the city and the governing body, the city attorney, and the meeting will resume in ten ten.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Paul, whistle second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to recess in the executive session, executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 754319B1. The meeting will include the governing body, the city administrator, the city attorney, and the open meeting will resume in the council chambers at 10:26.
Second.
Second. That's okay. Got it.
All in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. Um.
Mr. Mayor.
Bring us back in, Homer.
I move to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the contract with the city administrator as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Are we doing a roll?
Oh. Damn. Did I do it right?
We're doing a roll call vote.
Uh, yeah, let's do. All right, uh, roll call vote. Dana.
Councilmember Wimmer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Warrington, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember O'Kates, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Henry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Barry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries four two.
Um, okay. Member items. Uh, Homer's grounded. We'll start with Paul.
Just in light of how late it is, I had a lot of things I was gonna bring up, but I'll move them on to the next time. The last two weeks have been busy. I was at the Kansas Economic Forum. I also went to the KDOT, uh, I'm supposing seminar or whatever, regional deal that KDOT does to talk about the roads. Also went to the Kansas, or the League of Cities Annual Conference. All really good opportunities and really good information and insight. Pretty exciting for where I think the state can be moving forward and where the city can be. But again, I'll, I'll post that somewhere on social through Rep. That's all.
None tonight.
Um, I got nothing except I did just remember next Friday night is the Andover, Andover Central football game on the 24th. So please make sure that you get to go and enjoy your free popcorn.
Or you give a free popcorn? And great hamburgers.
Go ahead, Homer.
All right.
Do you, man? I'm just kidding.
I'm not giving.
No, you're fine.
Yeah. You can come to the game.
Door dashing.
Big shout out to Rick and the, and the grant for the lights and stuff. Glad we got to do that. So that's awesome. Great work. Thank you.
Is that it?
Sorry if I'm stealing your thunder, Tim, but Tim was put on the board of directors for the League of Kansas Municipalities. Probably why he's dressed up tonight.
No.
Uh, and then shout out to Paul for doing videos. I've had like three or four people say, hey, I appreciate him putting it out there. Personal request. Paul, can you do the workshops as well?
Yes, Phil. Thank you for the congratulations. I wasn't gonna say a word, but um, yes, I did get voted on to be a boarder director for the Kansas League. And I dressed up just to see if this stuff still fit me. So it's not like I did that for anything else. I do have some really cool information that I'm gonna share with staff that I found out about the World Cup and coming next, next June. Something that Megan and Jenny, you know, think we all kind of need to get together and kind of plan a little bit or see what we can do. But I'll, I'll do that. I'll, I'll shoot some emails and maybe we can find some time to talk about that. But that's all I got. Um, yes, Phil, thank you for the congratulations. I wasn't gonna say a word, but, um, yes, I did get voted on to be a board of director for the Kansas League. And I dressed up just to see if this stuff still fit me. So it's not like I did that for anything else. I do have some really cool information that I'm gonna share with staff that I found out about the World Cup and coming next, next June. Something that Megan and Jenny, you know, think we all kind of need to get together and kind of plan a little bit or see what we can do, but I'll, I'll do that. All shoots me emails and maybe we can find some time to talk about that. But that's all I got.
Chief Russell, why don't you talk about the grant that y'all got? Please.
The federal grant? Yeah, so Lieutenant Smith submitted two grant applications for the federal round this year. One for the AFG, which is the equipment grant, and the other one for, uh, well, we did another equipment grant. So we got notified just before the shutdown that we were awarded the grant for self-contained breathing apparatus. You'll remember we have that in our next year's budget. So about $315,000 of that budget is going to be paid for by the federal government. So tremendously good news. We're very excited. That's gonna really change things for years to come.
Jenny, would you talk about the, uh, what Chief Russell obtained? Is, uh, cause he won't.
He became a chief fire officer, which is a really big deal. When we set goals through the annual evaluation process, leadership's a big focus. And so one of the goals that he admitted for himself would be a stretch goal. Doesn't look like a stretch on this side of the equation, but for him, it was a stretch goal, was to become a chief fire officer. And he accomplished that in the last week or so, and we're really glad.
All right.
Congratulations.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Good night.
Good night.